Hey Mike.
Yes, sir.
You're moving back towards the center.
Yeah, back in the center, yeah. Slowly but surely.
Mike, you said you want to be an attorney, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly.
He got the headaches, he wants some money.
Just bill him, yeah. Are we live yet, Robbie?
I'm waiting for you guys.
Oh, good. I won't say anything too bad. I have a good attorney.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Waterworks Board meeting to order, and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Troxel, would you call roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, Councilman Kevin Conley.
President.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Rob Getzloff.
Present.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief David Meyer.
Here.
Police Chief Pete Sormas.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Steve McNamara.
Here.
Parks Superintendent John Novosich.
Here.
IT Robbie Hanson.
Here.
NICE Engineering Neil Simstad.
Here.
Public Works Andy Hansen.
Here.
Town Manager Robert Volkman.
Here.
Recording Secretary Robin Teal. And Clerk Treasurer Mike Troxel, present.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. As you're aware, the Waterworks Board only consists of three of the councilmen, and myself, Tom Schmidt, and Mr. Conley is here tonight for the Waterworks Board. So the first item on the agenda is the minutes of the November 10th public meeting. Motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero on the minutes. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Motion to approve claims.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero on claims. Reports, Mr. Volkman, any reports on Waterworks?
No reports.
Mr. Hanson, any reports?
No reports.
Thank you. Council members?
No, sir.
We have no old business and we have no new business at this time. I'll take business from the floor. Any business from the floor regarding Waterworks? Any business from the floor regarding Waterworks? No business from the floor. We'll move right into the redevelopment.
Call to order the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, December 8th, 2021. The time is 7:04 PM. I will bring in council members Caleb Johnson and Rob Getzloff into the roll call for this Redevelopment Commission meeting. With that being said, the minutes of the November 10th, 2021, public meeting. Pleasure, the board.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passes four zero. Claims, Mr. Troxel, anything additional?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
So move on claims.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passes four zero. Any reports from staff?
No reports.
Thank you. Council members?
None.
We have no old business, we have no new business. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Utility Board Commission meeting for December 8th at approximately 7:06 PM. The roll call stays the same as the Redevelopment Commission, and the first item on the agenda is the minutes from the November 10th public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero. Any additional claims, Mr. Troxels, for Utility Board?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Move to approve claims.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero. Reports, any reports, Mr. Volkman, on utilities?
No reports.
Mr. Hanson, any reports?
No reports.
Mr. Simstad?
No reports.
Any council members?
No report.
No, sir.
Okay. We have no old business for utilities, no new business. At this time, it's open to the floor. Any business from the floor regarding utilities? Any business from the floor regarding utilities? No business from the floor. Meeting's adjourned. We'll move into the Town Council.
I'd like to call the Town Council meeting to order at 7:06 for Wednesday, December 8th. I'll accept the roll call from the Utility Board. Go on to the minutes of the November 10th, 2021, public meeting. Pleasure, the board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero. Any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Thank you.
So, so move on claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero.
I have a question. Mike, on the claims, is that the last payment on the building corp?
Yes, that will be our last payment that we have on our building corporation. So, 20 years, so.
You own the building now.
All right, congratulations, us.
Not yet. We haven't made the payment yet, but.
We're close, we're close.
Mr. Volkman, want to call for reports, please?
Uh, no reports.
Uh... Chief Patterson?
Call around.
Any reports?
Yes, good evening. Just wanted to report that the Sherville Fire Department responded to 312 EMS-related calls and 47 fire-related calls for the month of November, totaling 359 calls. Also wanted to just let the staff know that we have today posted the hiring for adding two additional full-time hire fires to our staff today for the hiring due to 2022. Thank you, Ryan, I appreciate it.
Excellent.
I give a comment. Robert, you know, you had asked me about online job applications.
Yes.
I did work with the IT department, and their applications we use, they have a component, electronic component. They're looking at the security levels and what else they would need for that, so that when you do advertise, you should be able to get applicants online.
Excellent, I appreciate that.
Deputy Fire Chief, Dave?
Nothing to report, sir.
All right. Chief Sormas?
Nothing to report tonight.
Deputy Chief Steve?
Just have one report. We're going to be hiring, swearing in two officers, new officers, on December 13th, which is Monday, at nine o'clock at the town court. These officers are going to handle some in-house training for the next couple of weeks, and then they'll respond to the academy in January, along with the four other officers that were hired in November 15th. So, we've got two new guys coming to the board, so that's six guys total, and we want to thank the Town Council and any Safety Board members, if they're there, for all the help and the assistance for this. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. John?
Yes.
Chief Patterson, I think, had an additional comment.
Yeah, I apologize for interrupting you. We also, on December 13th, at 7:00 PM at Forest Safety, we will be swearing in our five new members that we have just hired, bringing our staff back up to be full-time. So if anybody's available, we can have it.
What time was that, chief?
6:00 PM, sorry.
6:00 PM.
You'll be there.
I will be there.
All right.
John, anything?
Nothing to report.
All right. Neil?
No reports, Mr. President.
Mr. Hanson?
No reports.
No reports. All right. Council members?
No, sir.
Not at this time.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll take public comments regarding the agenda items. Public comments regarding agenda items from the floor. Any public comments? Hearing none, I will close the floor. Under Old Business Ordinance Number 1975 is an ordinance establishing compensation, salaries, and wages for officials and employees of the town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, classifying certain positions of employment, together with rates of pay, repealing and amending prior ordinance in conflict here within, declaring that an emergency exists. This is the second reading. Mr. Volkman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We had a draft of the salary ordinance last month, and you did do first reading on it, but there were some changes to that ordinance made, some minor changes which were sent to you. So I would suggest that we do actually two readings on this tonight. Reading to approve and reading to adopt.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Ordinance 1975, an ordinance establishing our compensation for our salaries for all of our employees. I move, I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero.
Mr. President, I move to adopt.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero. Thank you. Under New Business, we have a public hearing. Mr. Volkman, are the proofs of publication in order, or Mr. Troxel, whether answers that? Mr. Volkman?
Yes.
Okay. And, um... So at this time, we need to open it to the floor for ordinance number 1976, right? Is that what we're doing?
Yep.
Okay, so we're opening it for public comment for ordinance number 1976, which is an ordinance vacating utility easement in the town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, and all matters related thereto. Bob?
Um, yes, this is for the, where tick plays at. This was a abandoned easement that was no longer needed on the south side of the property. It was actually put in for NIPSCO in the original plodding. That NIPSCO, when they got out on site, they did not use the southeastment. They actually went to the north side, and it was easier for them to accommodate the services for the building. So this is vacating that easement on what's basically typically.
Did, do we have something from NIPSCO saying they consent?
Yes, yeah, all, all, actually, because it's a public utility, they have to give a sign-off on everybody. And, and we, we don't have any.
So at this time, I will ask if there's any public comment from the floor? Any public comments? Hearing none, we'll now close the floor. Pleasure, the council?
Mr. President, move to approve ordinance 1976.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries four zero.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt, and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero. Thank you. B is ordinance number 1977, an ordinance amending Town Ordinance Number 1829, being an ordinance amending Town Ordinance 1563, being an ordinance amending Town Code Section 3-1 and 3-2, pertaining to the method by which Town Council members are elected and pertaining to the geographic, geographic boundaries of district wards in the town of Shererville, and repealing all Town Code sections and ordinances or parts thereof and in conflict here within, repealing all Town Code sections and ordinances or positions therefore in conflict herewith and all matters related here too. Mr. Volkman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is the, every 10 years, we need to balance our wards based on the census. So the census was completed this year. Data was given to us a little bit late. And because we have elections next year, we have to accomplish this before the end of this year. So this is actually a redraw of the ward maps. Councilman Schmidt worked on this with conjunction with the other council members, and I think everybody's in agreement with the proposed new maps that have been presented to you.
Okay, thank you so much. Pleasure, the board?
Mr. President?
Mr. Schmidt?
First of all, first of all, and Bob is correct, this is something that, that it's, you know, it's our obligation every 10 years is to balance, is to balance our wards out. I want to thank all the staff that was involved, and, and my fellow council people that, that all looked at it and worked, you know, agreed to it. But our staff did a wonderful job getting it all together due to the fact that we received the census numbers, as you know, late this year, and we only had a couple of weeks to actually get this accomplished. And we're here tonight to get it passed, so it'll be prepared for when the elections start in 2022. We'll have balanced wards out for people to look at. So under that, under that note, I'll move to approve ordinance 1977.
Okay, we have a motion?
A second.
And a second, and any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero.
Move to adopt, Mr. President?
We have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero. Consider request for variance of use allowed to drive-through lane within the US 41 Commercial Corridor Overlay District, Board of Zoning Appeal Case 21-11-22. Petitioners, David Henne, location, Finders International. HD Group, location is 67th and US 41 on the southeast corner. Favorable reclamation, recommendation by the BZA of 5-0. Mr. Volkman?
Yes, this is the, actually, the property at 67th and 41. It's proposed for a portillo with the drive-through. This is the drive-through portion of it. They're also on schedule to be in front of the planning commission next month. They have, you've all got a, seen a copy of the drive-through plan. They have accommodated a lot of stacking. They seem, well, Portillo seems to be very efficient on operating their drive-throughs and making, making sure there's adequate, adequate space. This is a little over three-acre site, so it's actually a large site, and they accommodate all of their drive-through traffic on-site. Won't spill out onto the street. I think they have accommodations for over 50 cars in the drive-through. It comes to you with a 5-0 recommendation from the BZA.
Is there somebody here representing them tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, just... Hi there. Can you just come up and state your name and that for the record, please?
Amanda Shireen, HD Group.
Okay, Amanda, hi. Anyone here, any council members have any questions?
I do have a couple, Mr. President.
Okay.
Well, I, I see that you have three lanes of drive-through proposed. I was at the, the BZA hearing, and one of those lanes is, is for online orders or something along those lines. Is, am I understanding that correct?
They do have, I actually just went to one today, and they do have a lane, well, they will at some point put it for online orders. But typically, the way their drive-through works is all three will be drive-through lanes, and then their employees come out and they'll take orders, and then they close off the last drive-through lane, and that'll be an actual bypass lane. So once you get your order, you are able to get out, and they only use it for full stacking when they absolutely have to.
So, so they just kind of gauge how busy they are, and they'll open up another lane if they need it, so to speak. So, so if it's an average Tuesday at 2:00 and it's not busy or whatever, they'll only have one lane open or whatever.
Right, and then they'll just use bypass.
Just adjust.
For bypass. And then they also have, it should be labeled on your site, Plan OLO on the parking spaces, and that's where people can park for their online orders if the drive-through's packed.
So you have, you have three, three spots right in front of the building. It looks like it says OLO.
Right. And then sometimes they'll accommodate through it, in the drive-through if they need to.
I'm a little concerned about the entrance exits proposed down into the Strax Plaza that's right in front of the drive-through lane and, and right near 41 there. I'm concerned about a lot of traffic exiting right there after they get their food, trying to get out onto 41. It's, it's the first thing they're going to see as soon as they get their food, and, and they're going to see this exit, and they're going to go into the plaza, and they're going to see, oh, well, there's 41 right there, and they're going to make an immediate right, and they have only got, like, one parking spot or two parking spots, and, and it's just going to back you guys up into your, into your drive-through lane, is my concern.
I know other sites, they don't... Because of the way it works and how their orders are brought out, they don't typically have so many people exiting at the same time. So it's, it's, it's just because of their efficiency, because they've been doing drive-throughs for so many years. They're, they handle it better than most.
I, I respect that, I, I do, I respect that. But if you, if you go and you send even three cars there, based on where, where your entrance and exit is, you're, you're not going to be able to stack more than two cars at that stop sign trying to get on, on 41. And who knows how long it's going to be till they can turn out onto 41? And you can only turn right, and so you're going to get people that are going to go that direction, not knowing they can't turn left, get into that spot, and, and then they're stuck there. And, and that's my concern, is you're going to have, create a problem for us with, with traffic there.
And I know, we're coming to the, the Planning Commission study session where we're going to, because we're going to have to go through site plan review too, which, right now, we just are trying to get the excluded use of being able to use the drive-through, and then we're going to be discussing site plan.
I see that. Okay, those are my questions.
Anyone else?
No.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Caleb?
Motion to approve variance of use to allow drive-through lane within the US 41 Commercial Corridor Overlay District, Board of Zoning Appeals Case 21-11-22. Petitioner David Henne, local, location Finders International. Amanda Schwerin, HD Group, location 67th and US 41 Southeast Corner. Favorable recommendation by BZA 5-0. And in this motion, I would like to adopt the findings of fact as presented by the BZA at their hearing.
All right.
A second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero. Right. Ordinance number 1977. An ordinance amending Town Ordinance Number 1829. Did I do that already? Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Okay. Next is the Ward to Bid for Community Development Block Grant, GDBG, Roarman Park Project. Is that you, Mr. Volkman? Mr. Stemstad?
Mr. President?
Yes.
We have the bid report for the town of Shererville, CDBG project, which is a grant through the Lake County Community Economic Development Department to the town, which is being used on improvements to the Roarman Park facilities. Bids were opened yesterday at 9:00 AM. Upon the opening of those bids, they were taken under advisement for tabulation reports. We had four bidders who submitted bids for that project. The range of bids were from $132,000 to $157,598.20. All bidders submitted the required bid security. Only three bidders submitted the required noncollusion affidavit, which is Indiana State Form 96, which was required. The affidavit that I just mentioned was absent in the bid for Integral Construction Company Incorporated. There was mathematical errors noted in the bids for Goff, and those errors were corrected per the specification manual and lowered their bid from $161,173.13 to $157,598.28. Following a review of the submitted bids, the project should be awarded to the most responsive and responsible bidder. And given that the bid for integral construction is considered to be non-responsive as it did exclude the noncollusion affidavit as was required, the award is recommended to be made for Gary Up Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $149,500. We reviewed this with town staff and legal counsel, and you have the bid tabulation following the report and the proof of publication following that bid tabulation in my report. Any questions?
Council members, any questions?
I do.
Okay, Caleb?
So it's going to cost us more money because they didn't submit that affidavit?
They are considered non-responsive as they did not submit a required portion of the bid documents, not only by your local ordinance, but by state statute.
And we can't just remind them to submit it? That doesn't work?
No, once, um, once the timeframe of nine o'clock for submission of bids was over, anything submitted after that is returned to the bidder sealed and unopened. I, I would love to save you that money.
Yeah.
One of the concerns would be what potential costs there would be by attempting to save that money of a non-responsive bidder.
I, I have another question, and it's just curious to me, so I'm wondering if there's an explanation. Why is Goff's estimate for construction and field engineering $75,000, and every other bidder's estimate is $7,000, $5,000, $3,000? What, what is going on?
Excellent question. No, I, if, if I had an answer for that, I would love to give it to you. You'll see as you go down through the items, there are summation or product errors between unit prices and unit amounts in that bid. But by definition, in the specification manual, we take the unit amounts and the unit quantities, and that determines the product. So regardless of what they submitted as their total amount, the corrections are made as a product of those two items, being the unit amounts and the unit cost they submitted. Why it's $75,000 for field construction engineering, which is essentially layout, and $210 to install the equipment for the pro, for the park? Again, excellent question.
Yeah, just, just confusing. All right, and we're not able to just pick and choose which ones we want to, we want to choose from these things, huh?
If, if you were in a situation where you were requesting quotes, yeah, absolutely. And this is something your Clerk Treasurer, Town Manager, and I reviewed in consultation with the, the Town Attorney as well. And given what was submitted to you, right, wrong, or otherwise, this is following ordinances and state statute, the recommendation that's consistent with those.
We should, we should have Goff install this playground instruction. If they're willing to do it for 210 bucks, we'll buy it and have everybody else do the other stuff.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I'll move to approve the recommendation from our town engineer, Gary Up Construction, for $149,500 for the, the block grant for the CDBG at the Roarman Park Project.
Okay, we have a motion?
A second.
And a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero.
Mr. President?
Yes?
There is one more item, if you don't mind. I had a conversation with, with Tom and a councilman from Dyer, and there, there appears to be interest in pursuing a bike trail to connect where Shererville Bike Trail ends on Eagle Ridge Drive into Dyer, and a prorated portion of that. At their meeting, they directed their Town Manager to speak with Bob Volkman, your Town Manager, on coordinating a concept plan to be discussed for your consideration to move forward as the, the railroad right-of-way, which is directly west of Eagle Ridge Drive there, where your bike trail ends, appears to be non-responsive in, in their ability to grant an easement either to the town of Shererville or the town of Dyer. So that's something that, that Bob will bring to you as they approach you through their Town Manager to look at a concept plan to extend that bike trail from your, not quite, but close to your western corporate limits.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you. Okay. Consider approval to extend Family First Coronavirus Response Act, which will expire December 31st, 2021, to compensate up to 80 hours' pay leave to employees that are off- to compensate up to, uh, eighty hours' pay leave to employees that are off work due Corona, due to the COVID-nineteen, and is expiring March thirty-first of twenty twenty-two, Bob?
Yes, this, uh, currently, we're experiencing, uh, an impact from the coronavirus on our employees. We had extended this program, the Carestry Pack Program, and benefits, uh, through the end of the year, back in October. Uh, since that time, we, that's been used by twelve of our employees, uh, with a total cost of seventeen thousand dollars. Yeah, I think currently, this week, we had, like, ten employees infected by COVID, and so what, what we're requesting is the consideration to extend this program out till March thirty-first of twenty twenty-two.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero. Next is to consider release of cash certainties and cer, certificates of release for the following Plaza Heights addition, seventy-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty cents, and KNC Properties Holding LLC for thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six, uh, dollars and seventy-six, uh, seventy-seven cents. Mr. Volkman?
These are both subdivisions that are completed, uh, we're holding cash certainties that they posted for their maintenance, um, the, the time has lapped now, and, you know, their two-year maintenance period has lapsed, and it's now appropriate to return these funds to the developers.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a question for Mr. Volkman, um, k, the KNC property holdings, um, seventy-seventh and forty-one?
Yes. It's Kenny Grant's.
Oh, okay, that's right, yeah, I was trying to think of which corner it was, okay, s, okay.
Jenny Lane.
Jenny Lane, okay.
Where the, yeah, storage building is.
Okay. Mr. President, I move to approve, uh, bu, uh, to release the cash certainties and certificates on both of these.
All right, we have a motion?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero. Acceptance of, uh, consider acceptance of donations of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. Mike?
Yes, Mr. President, so these were donations we accepted up until November thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. And to the general town donations, we, uh, received from Cambridge Sensors USA, sixty cases of hand wipes at two hundred and sixteen dollars a case. This was an in-kind contribution totaling approximately, or totaling, twelve thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. We also received from Center Point Energy in Crown Point, Indiana, various equi, e, computer equipment, this was also considered an in-kind donation totaling, uh, two thousand, one hundred dollars. Total in-kind contributions to the town, fifteen thousand, sixty dollars even. Donation to the fire department, they received from Saint Michael's Labor of Love Ministry, fifty hand-knit scarves at thirty dollars a scarf. This in-kind donation was totaled fifteen hundred dollars for the fire department. Donation fund to the park department, Crown Point Community Foundation, Inc., uh, distribution from the Shererville Parks Foundation, received five hundred, six dollars and fifty-two cents. Donation to the animal control, the Shererville Police Department, Tracy Jackson, sixty-five dollars to the animal control fund. Canine fund received from Robert Emboric fundraiser for the canine program, fifty dollars, and the Shererville Police Department fundraiser, various donations, five hundred and fifty-five dollars for a total donation to that department of six hundred and five dollars. Our total in-kind donation, sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixty. Total monetary donations, one thousand, one seventy-six, fifty-two, for the total of seventeen thousand, seven thirty-six, fifty-two.
Thank you.
Move to approve, Mr. President, accept the donations.
We have a motion?
I'll second with discussion.
I'm a second, go ahead, Caleb.
I, just a general question, is there a limit on how much one business or one person can donate to the town?
I am not aware of, uh, any of that, of, uh, law or anything of that, so.
Okay.
I don't know.
Just seems like a very large donation, twelve thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars, so. Nothing else.
So we have a motion?
And I seconded, yep.
Very good. All, uh, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four zero. At this time, we will accept any business from the floor, any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, before we close, this, I'm sure the council members up here and myself would like to wish all of you a very, uh, happy holiday, and, uh, please enjoy yourselves, and, uh, we'll see you back here in latter part of December, right? Close it up. All right, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.